I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Mr. McCollison, please call roll.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
All nine members are present.
Thank you. I need a motion for the intent to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor, please vote.
Voting's open. Motion carries.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 28th, 2021, and the special meeting for general purposes of September 30th, 2021.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Modrak and seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any changes to those minutes? Any concerns? Okay, voting.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay. Is anyone from SGA in the meeting? Gian, is Gian Vargis in the meeting? Okay, so I don't think we have a report from SGA tonight. What? Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Just moving along too quickly here. Thank you. I'd like to announce executive sessions on October 19th, 2021, and October 26th, 2021 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Ms. Deanna Ford, will you please give us the PTO, PTA report for tonight, Octobers?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Deanna Ford. I'm the vice president of the PTO at Lincoln Elementary, and I'm here with the PTO report for October. So, October was a great month at Lincoln. We were able to hold the Slastic Book Fair and raise money for the library. Students had a ton of fun shopping in person. To help the kindergarten students celebrate being introduced to Miss S., Lincoln is holding a sock drive as a service project. We're collecting new socks in all sizes through the end of this month, and all of the socks will be donated to SHIM. After being canceled last year, we were so excited to be able to bring back the Fall Festival. Money raised went towards the 4th grade class. Thank you to all of the businesses and families who helped to make this event a huge success. The kids enjoyed a haunted trail, a bounce house and games. Families enjoyed rental options, photo booths, and food trucks. A special thanks to the Interact Club. The student volunteers were just amazing. We also held a Mo's Taco Kit fundraiser, and sales for Sarah's Candy are currently happening now. Benjamin Franklin had a very successful October this year as well, starting with a spirit night at Toss Pizza. The first-ever trunk-or-treat event was a great success. The pumpkin patch drop-off began this week, with proceeds benefiting a charity. They're also looking forward to a hayride at Simmons Farm and a spirit week this week for all of the outdoor Halloween events. Looking forward, they will be completing the annual Mrs. Fields and Sarah's fundraisers, a Chipotle Spirit Night, and the Fantastic Cookies with Santa event. They are also excited for their Santa shop. George Washington Elementary has had a busy start to the fall season as well. Fundraising for the Cheffler's Meat Raffle has been successful, and the winner was drawn on the 25th. The Fall Sarah's Candy Sale is currently running, and they will be hosting a new fundraising event, Night at the Races, at the Bethel Park Community Center on November 13th. They hosted a Toss Pizza Spirit Day as well on October 19th, and the PTO organized a trunk-or-treat event for the students at Millennium Park on the 24th, which had an amazing turnout and was enjoyed by all. Red Ribbon Week had just passed. The students spent the week learning about living a drug-free life. The Week was filled with dress-up days and activities, as well as a pledge to stay drug-free. The Fall Book Fair just passed and was held with the help of parent volunteers. George Washington is also hosting a virtual pumpkin decorating contest through next week, and the 4th grade is to have a Halloween miniature golf party on the 28th at Cool Springs. Parent volunteers have planned classroom parties for Halloween to be held outside with the help of a donation of a tent from EV's Hardware. There are several dress-up days scheduled at the end of the month to recognize breast cancer and Down Syndrome awareness, and preparations for holiday events are in the works. At IMS, they're planning for their annual holiday craft show in November, and the PTSO is kicking off their Spirit Wear sale soon. These two fundraisers will help to fund all the activities for the remainder of the year. William Penn is getting into the swing of things with a big event coming up and some fundraisers already under their belts. They have the Fall Festival planned for Thursday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 on the school block top. This is a free event for all Penn students and their families. They're following all COVID safety rules and keeping the event outdoors. They'll have a fire truck for lighting, hot buns, food truck, and wood-stoked barbecue, which will act as fundraisers for the 4th grade committee. They rented a bounce slide, purchased pumpkins for a mini pumpkin patch, and had a spray tattoo machine, costume parade, music, and crafts planned. It should be a great event, and they are all looking forward to it. They had their first book fair of the year and were allowed up to five volunteers in the building at a time to run it, and it ran very smoothly. The 4th grade committee planned a fun hayride event at Simmons Farm. Parents paid $15, and students went for free. It included a hayride and a big bonfire with apples and smores and a cornfield mead, and the 4th graders had a great time. Recent restaurant fundraisers included Panda Express and Chick-fil-A, and they raised $55 and $122 respectively. The Spirit Wear Sale with Carco Graphics brought in $259. They also trained a new fundraiser this year with Shop Fund. It was cookie dough, cheesecake, waffles, and more. The students sold over $10,000 of items. They're waiting for their final numbers but expect to receive 40%, so around $4,000. It was an amazing fundraiser. They expressed their appreciation for the janitorial staff by writing them thanking notes and giving them gift cards for Custodian Appreciation Day. The teacher appreciation committee is planning to provide dinner for staff for the upcoming virtual parent-teacher conferences. They're thinking ahead to the Cookies with Santa event and are wondering how that event will look this year. The Memorial PTA has had an exciting month and are looking forward to more fun as the holidays quickly approach. They just finished a successful coffee fundraiser with Java Joe's, which gave them the funds for the 3rd grade virtual assembly with Jeff the Geo Guy. They were also able to order memorial shirts for all of the kindergarten and new students, buy dinner for the teachers for the upcoming conferences, and most excitingly, fund the upcoming Halloween celebration. Although classroom parties can't currently happen, they have a fun-filled day planned for the students to celebrate Halloween this Wednesday on the playground. Many of the wonderful volunteers have planned games, snacks, and activities to be enjoyed outside. They were very happy to reopen the school student store this month. Funds from the store go to the 4th grade activities. The first 4th grade activity is a hayride coming up on November 1st at Simmons Farm. This week was the Fall Book Fair, and they're excited to supply new books and resources for their library. The gratitude committee participated in the cleanup this past Saturday by volunteering hours to clean up the school grounds, and it looks amazing. The family fund committee is looking forward to the First Finger Night, which will be held at the Clubhouse on Brightwood, and will be Halloween-themed with costumes, games, and prizes for everyone. The Memorial PTA is looking forward to continuing to bring positive impacts and lots of fun to school. Finally, Neil Armstrong continues to engage students with fundraising opportunities and events. They hosted a special meeting to review the budget and ensure that they are all set for the 2021 and 2022 school year. They hosted the First School Store and the Second Popcorn Friday. The first-ever virtual trivia night is being moved to January due to so many competing programs. The next fundraiser is the Fun Pasta fundraiser, which kicks off on Halloween and runs until November 7th. The color run is scheduled for November 13th and already has 95 participants registered. Additional fall programming includes a virtual Santa shop, ongoing school store, and Popcorn Friday events. The Nam t-shirts have been printed and will be distributed to the student body soon. They want to thank all Bethel Park families, especially the parent volunteers who are working within the volunteer COVID limitations, for supporting their programming and doing what they can to provide the students with a more normal experience this year. And that's the PTO report for October. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you very much to the PTO and to all of you who volunteer your time to make such wonderful activities for our students. Appreciate your report very much.
My pleasure. Take care.
Take care.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandel, do you have a solicitor report for us tonight?
I provided my report, Mrs. Dobos, in executive session. Thank you.
Student government, student govern... Are those the only people that are in?
Yeah, they're in.
All right. Do we have any committee reports this week? I know we gave a few of them last week.
I do, from Steel Center. Just want to say that Steel Center has added two paras now to their staff, which will be in some extra hands in the classroom. We're really excited about that. Also, we do have a candidate for the diesel technology position, so there won't be any downtime for that program. We were concerned about that. We held open house. We're completing it by the end of the month in three different segments, so that you didn't have everybody there at one time because of COVID, so that worked out and is doing very well. And the last thing that I would like to say is I'm so excited because Dave Schapp from the Baldwin School District is going to be the president for PSBA, and I've served on three different boards with him, AIU, Shasta, and Steel Center, and he definitely has the schools and education at heart, so he's going to make a great president for PSBA, and it's good to have somebody from this end of the state representing us.
Great. Mr. McCollison, do we need to have the video camera on for the cable TV? Or do they take it from our...
Well, we'll...
You can click on the link on the website if you want to.
Okay. No, I don't... I'm fine if it go... I think he takes it from our live feed now. I just wondered why he brought the camera here.
I don't know.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Dobos. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we acknowledge first that we completed the first nine weeks of school today, marked the end of the first quarter, and I'd like to say certainly from the administration's perspective and the superintendent's perspective that we've had a really great start to the school year, and that's thanks to the administrators, principals, teachers, support staff, bus drivers, cafeteria, everybody stepping up and taking on this challenge of reopening the schools five days and giving students the best possible experience to help them reach their goals, to reach their dreams. The district took a very bold step in that same direction last week with sharing with you and the community our strategic plan. It's out for public comment now. Will be for an additional, probably another 20 days or so. And if you haven't seen it yet, you should take a look on the district website, or if you'd like to see paper copy, you can see the one here on the central office binder or in the public library in the reference section is a binder with these documents. Invite you to see, and you're invited also to provide comment or reaction to it via a Google link that we have on our website. There are a couple of retirements on tonight's agenda. When we get to the personnel section, I'd like to acknowledge the service of these two individuals who retire from Bethel Park School District. The first is Mr. Mark Dubich. Mark started with the school district as a substitute bus driver in 2000. In March of 2001, he took a full-time job as a permanent bus driver, and he retires holding that same position currently. And you also will see retirement from Patricia Talarico. She began her employment as a substitute bus aide, and she also served as a noontime aide at Lincoln Elementary and a substitute noontime aide at William Penn, and she retires from the district as a bus aide for those years. So, we wish them the best. Thank you to both for your service to Bethel Park School District and students, and wish you the best for your retirement. I also have a proclamation that I'd like to present. I'll read from the proclamation. "School board service has long been a crucial part of our nation's legacy and its commitment to public education. School directors are described as principled, ethical individuals with a deep desire to serve. They believe in the value of our public schools and local control of public education for the benefit of all students. Today, school districts are expected to offer more and more services along with a world-class education with limited resources. These expectations provide a tremendous challenge for school directors, these unpaid volunteers who give of their time to contribute to the schools and the communities they serve." And so, it gives me immense pleasure to recognize Mrs. Pam Dobos for eight years of service as a school director to the Bethel Park School District on behalf of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And the next thing on my part of the agenda is to ask Mr. Cromie if he would please share with the board and the community the good news from the school district.
Good evening, everyone. I'm first going to talk about... I'm trying to make this as quick as possible because I know we've got a big softball game tonight. The first group I'm going to honor is the PMEA group. Violinist Sarah Wolf and Claire McGough have earned recognition for the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District One Honors Orchestra, and six others have been selected to the PMEA district band, including Anastasia Bogashenko, who plays the flute, Becky Mack, who plays the oboe, Willow Harnishen, who plays the clarinet, Becca Topper, who plays the horn, Brady McIernan, who is the horn alternate, and Brayden Lloyd in percussion. The students were selected from a highly competitive ensemble, and they will advance to the next round. Staying in the music department, they are on November 11th through the 13th. Bethel Park will present You Can't Take It With You. Tickets for that show will go on sale on November 4th. They are $5 each and can be purchased at the door or by calling 412-854-8514. You'll see that on our website. You'll see that in social media. You'll see that in the weekly newsletter, and you can either pay for it with cash or with a check made payable to Bethel Park School District. Would also like to congratulate Nina Percy, who recently participated in Global Makers' Day. She's a teacher at IMS, as you all know, and Global Makers' Day is a worldwide celebration of learning in which makers from around the world discuss different projects, learning spaces, creations, art lessons, coding, 3D designs, and more. The event was livestreamed via YouTube Live, much like our meetings, and Mrs. Percy's presentation was called Asian Inspired Metal Art, and it was decades in the making and was reflective of a deeply personal journey for the veteran art teacher as she began learning about the Creole Nation about 20 years ago when she made a trip there, and it just touched her soul. So, congratulations to Nina, who really did a fabulous job. Also, I'm going to talk about Spartan Pharmacy will host a pair of flu vaccination clinics this Friday, October 29th, will be for the staff, and on November 1st, students and their families can get their flu vaccination in the South Gym Museum of the High School, and you can see our website for details. Also, want to thank WTAE reporter Shannon Perrine, who did a wonderful piece about the national school bus driver shortage and focused on Bethel Park and some of the things we have to offer. I'd also like to congratulate Transportation Director Scott Zeeler and trainer Michelle Waldauer, who really did a great job representing the school district. If you know someone who's interested in driving a school bus for Bethel Park, we're offering a $1,000 signing bonus. We're also looking for school bus aides who can earn a $500 signing bonus. Katie Nucci has gotten a lot of attention for something she did recently. The 4th grade teacher at Benjamin Franklin surprised everyone when she decided to read to her students via livestream just one day after undergoing brain surgery for a non-cancerous tumor that had grown to the size of a racquetball. The reading took place from her hospital bed in the intensive care unit at Allegheny General Hospital, and Katie said she just wanted to share with her love of literacy. She wanted to share that with her students, and it's gotten a lot of attention. It was featured on CNN last night, and it's also gotten a lot of local coverage. So, we'd like to thank Shannon Perrine for really covering that story initially, and I'd also like to thank anyone who's shown interest in it, and we'd, of course, like to thank our fabulous 4th graders at Franklin for being such faithful readers, and Mrs. Nucci for being such a dedicated teacher. Also, want to talk about the Raptor Visitor Security System. We recently transitioned to Raptor, which is a district-wide school visitor screening system that provides schools with an effective way to help keep unwanted visitors out while keeping track of those who have been admitted in. The new system electronically signs in and signs out visitors. It prints visitor badges. It screens all visitors against the National Sex Offender Database and provides real-time offender alerts. Simply by scanning a visitor's driver's license, valid ID, or other acceptable information, Raptor can instantly screen offenders in all 50 states, and it's been a very good tool for a lot of schools, and we're very excited to have it. I'd also like to congratulate our football players for the performance they put on for the Gold Star Game, which we had on October 1st. Not only did we beat West Allegheny 26 to 10, I think the highlight of the night, everyone would agree, was that we were part of the Gold Star Game, the Western Pennsylvania Gold Star Game, and it's a series of high school football games that serve to honor fallen military members from Western Pennsylvania. Ten seniors each from Bethel Park and West Allegheny represented 20 fallen soldiers from the area, and the families of the deceased were on hand for the honor, and I thought Bethel Park put itself amazingly well that night. Terrell Edmonds from the Steelers was there, and so were Steelers.com. BPTV did a feature piece on it, and so did KDKATV. And again, we'd like to thank Kim Gable and the good people at KDK for helping to make that happen. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate the marching band, which held its annual marching band festival in early October. They honored longtime music teacher Mike Petrosi for his 35 years of service. The booster has also surprised him by flying in his son for the festivities. His son attends school just outside of Nashville, and we'd also like to congratulate the visiting bands, who were amazing. They were Avella, Bell Vernon, Blackhawk, and South Fayette, and I'd be remiss if I did not mention our amazing drumline performance, which really was the highlight of the evening. So, that's all I have for you, and go Hawks!
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. Last piece from my part of the agenda, Mrs. Dobos, is just to acknowledge the folks that joined us Monday evening last night for a presentation on the facilities feasibility study that the board had been presented back in the spring and the sort of the logic journey that it's taken since then and where we stand now. We'll repeat that same presentation online tomorrow for folks that couldn't make it out Monday night. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Cromie, for such a detailed report. Appreciate that very much. At this time, we will take public comments on agenda items only. In order to comment, you should call 412-851-6911, and when it is answered, you are required to state your name, home address, and a description of your comment, and I'd like to remind you that the comments at the beginning of the meeting are reserved for agenda items only, and other comments can be shared at the end of the meeting. Each public comment is limited to two minutes in duration, and I ask that you keep that in mind, and we'll wait 30 seconds for the delay before we move forward. Are there any...
There are no calls at this time.
Any calls?
No calls.
Okay, we will continue then with the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, for those of you who weren't part of the committee meeting or didn't watch it last week, now for a while now, we have been moving items to a consent agenda that do not need any further discussion, and we can approve them all. There are 17 items on the consent agenda. At this time, are there any of those items that any board member would like to be held out? Okay, I'd like to have a motion for the 17 items to be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Ms. Turner. Any comments or questions about any one of those? We've got the district strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, which they're both similar. The one goes to the state, the other one is our five-year plan, professional development, independent study, extra-duty responsibility, resignations, appointment of personnel, unpaid leave of absence, professional and classified, a job description, staffing changes, revised agreement for the school police officers, salaries and bills, financial report, budgetary transfers, workers' compensation agreement, and transportation agreement with Baldwin Whitehall. If there are no questions, then would you please open the items for voting?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, Personnel Committee?
Okay, tonight, under Personnel, there are four items. I'll read them out loud. Approval of Schoology Champions, two, changes to the extracurricular pay schedule, current positions, three, the approval of extra-duty responsibility program for the 21-22 school year, and number four, the appointment of personnel. So, I move one through four.
Okay, I need a...
Second. I'd like number one held out.
Okay, number one.
I need to abstain from that.
Okay, so move two, three, and four then.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Nagel. So, we'll vote first of all on two, three, and four. Any questions or comments about any of those items? All right, so voting is open for two, three, and four.
Hold on. Sorry about that. It's open now.
Okay, Mr. McGregor, please move the other one.
Okay, the first one, approval of Schoology Champions.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Any comments or questions about this? Okay, voting.
Voting is open. Motion carries. Eight yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobos. There's one item this evening under Facilities and Services. Item number one is the purchase of the Market Forge Kettle Rebuild. I guess this is hard to find parts for this piece of equipment, and this is an absolute necessity for the kitchen, so that is why we're moving this this evening.
Second.
Okay, move by Mr. Spicuzza, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Any comments or questions about this?
Yeah, just a quick question. If it's somewhat obsolete, should we be thinking in some point in the future about replacing it with something that is easier to maintain?
Kitchen equipment replacement is going to be part of our facilities master plan. It's listed on there, so yeah, we're looking...
It's listed on there, so yeah, we're looking at all that equipment and knowing that we're going to need to replace some of it in the near future. We're kind of trying to hold off and keep things up and running. This particular piece of equipment has quite a bit of a useful life. I did ask that question, so it's just this one part they need. It was difficult to find, so...
Any other questions? Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen?
On the finance agenda, we have five items. Would anybody like any of these held out? Then I move to adopt items one through five that consist of approval to issue a request for qualification for construction management services, AIU Joint Purchasing Board, payment for repair of the Independence Middle School Gymnasium floor, acceptance of the 7% ARP ESER State Reserve grant, and five, payment for the repair of the Independence Middle School Gymnasium floor.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Christensen, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. My only question is why three and five?
They're two different payment applications. One came in later than the other, so we put them on as two different motions.
Any questions? Any further questions or comments? Okay.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
I have four items. One, the first one is the approval of policy 214.1, transfer credits, the third and final reading. The revision of policies six, 6.3, and 820, third and final reading.
So those are the two that you're moving?
Yes.
Okay, I need a second for those two.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Modrak. Any questions about any of those items? I would just like to tell the public, explain to the public, that the one item asks you in the future for our November meeting in particular to now register to make a public comment. It's a request. There's a Google form that will be available before the next meeting to state your request to speak and also to state your reason for speaking. We will continue to take public comments as they come in via the phone system. This is just so that we have a kind of a heads-up so that we know and we're prepared if we have to, you know, research anything or find anything out in terms of a question or a request. So this policy comes to us from the PSBA, and there will be a Google link for you to register to speak for starting at the next meeting. Okay.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Still under Policy Committee, there's the revisions to policy 915, the second of the three readings, and revisions to policy 332, sick leave, which Mr. Puccinari talked about last week, and revisions to policy 702.1, which Dr. Walsh and I addressed last week, too, in crowdfunding, and that's the first of three readings.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We're not voting on those three items, on those two items. They will be...
Trying to...
Number...number...number three will be voted...
Banking that one for next meeting.
Number three will be voted on in November, and number four will be voted on possibly in December. At this time, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay. If any come in during the board comments, we can then address them. Are there any board comments that anyone would like to make tonight?
I'd like to wish Mr. Christensen a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
I think they're supposed to be business-related comments, aren't they?
Any other board comments at this time?
I just want to thank Dr. Walsh and Dr. Jansanti and Mr. Fierce for doing a very good overview of the strategic plan at the community center last night, so thank you very much.
Real quick, Dr. Walsh, when people want to access that link for tomorrow, is it going to be posted on our front page or the webpage? Where can they find it on our district website?
Yeah, it's...it's on the...it's on the website but not in the usual place. It's under the facilities, where the facilities master plan is currently housed. All the feasibility documents are there.
Okay.
It makes reference to that there. We can...maybe I'll have Mr. Cromie put that on the district news, so it's easier to find, which is on the homepage.
Okay, thank you.
They're referring to the facilities plan that will be livestreamed tomorrow night starting at...
6:30.
6:30. So if you're interested in finding out more information about the facilities plan, there'll be a presentation via Facebook Live, and you can access that on the website.
Yeah, it's actually, I should have said it's the same link. If you're watching right now, it's the same link. It's our same YouTube channel link.
It's the YouTube channel link. Okay. Other comments? Public...I mean, board comments at this time?
Just one more thing. Tonight, we hired a new girls' basketball coach. Her name is Samantha Logman. She's a 2007 graduate of Bethel Park High School. She's...has a nice history of coaching high school basketball, played some college ball. The committee that was in the process of interviewing the candidates felt that this was the best candidate at this time for Bethel Park. We wish her the best luck, and I know she'll be starting tomorrow, getting going with these girls and getting them off back into the playoffs.
Great. That's wonderful. Good news. Any other comments? Any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mrs. Turner and seconded by Mr. Modrak.
But boss, I gotta stop.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.